Do you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the November 15th, 2021 Board of Alderman meeting. We'll start first on minutes of the previous meeting, November 1st, 2021. All entertaining motions to approve.
So moved.
Perfect. We have a motion spent seconded. Does anyone have any alterations, changes, things they would like to point out in the minutes? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. That brings us to outside the rail. Up first, I have Art Vienas, who has submitted a letter which is toward the end of your packet. I believe it is following page seven. And then, Art, if you'd just join us over here at the podium, and the floor will be yours.
By the way, thank you. Can I pull this down when I talk?
Absolutely.
I'm vaccinated, all that stuff, so. Thank you very much for at least listening to my suggestions going forward. I live at 101 Center Street. People know that, across from the fire station. It's a little old brick building. Used to be the Historical Society. I bought it 28 years ago, and it was built in 1824. And at that time, they didn't have cars, so they didn't have to park them. They were just horses. Or horses. Boston accent, you're gonna forgive me. And in 1856 is when Center Street was built. That's like 30 years between. We haven't had a real issue at all for a number of years, but last year, we got ticket after ticket, and we have no place to park. And I have some photos I can leave with you that shows the parking situation. Hull Mainet has like four there. The next door neighbor has a garage and one. We have nothing. And then Stickney, and no one in the street, they all have residential parking. That's the first subject, and I was looking for a variance. It's dead end. In November 2nd, this is part of the second one. Took us five weeks to get a car from Alderman's, bought a new car. Brought it home. My wife drove home with a fractured back and just left it right there in front of our house. And a tractor trailer come in with double tandem cars. And went in, and you can't get down that street, and you stop, and then proceeded to back out and took the car with it. So, so we had five miles on it. So it needs a dead end sign or no outlet, because when I asked the truck driver, and there were three huge campers this year, that I had to direct out to get out, because we're the only ones actually living on the street, not literally on the street. And I asked this driver, he was all apologetic. They were going to Alderman's, I mean Volkswagen, and they cut through, big tandem, through that little park, and it's a dead end. So there's nowhere to go. So I have nowhere to park. I'm 80 shortly. My wife's 75. She's a visiting nurse, and she's an essential worker. And in the wintertime, we had a, I went through the whole department twice last year, the police. Everyone I could, they kept referring me, and, okay, we paid some tickets. Matt took care of a few. But now here's another winter, and I started a long time ago to see if there's a way that we can get some sort of variance of being able to park there, because my wife just got multiple fractures in her back. And I'm in good shape for 80, I guess, but anyway. Getting out at 5:00 in the morning to try to park at, or park, not park, but park, at Mainet's, which they said we could do that. But we gotta get up, we gotta go out at 12, you know, and park the cars, and then get up at 5:00, 5 o'clock, to move them so that they can have their private rig go in there to shovel. So I was looking for variance on that, and it's certainly necessary to have either a dead end at the beginning of where the Berkshire Bank, as you all know where this is, I think. You really can't see my house from there. Okay? That's across from the fire station. But if you go in just a little further, you can see it. Okay? And then I enclosed some pictures to show there's no parking, neighbor has them, Mainet's. And so these I'm just gonna leave, and I'm just hoping that something could be done. We've gone through all the cycles. We've made sure that we talked to the police chief all the way down, all the way to Mayor Lea. And they refer me, and I give credence to Donna downstairs. She's like, I had to bring him a pizza last week, because she's been my soulmate trying to get resolved over the period of time. But that's, that's what I'm asking. Some way to just consider it. If it can't be, it can't be. But 1824, it'll be 200 years old in a couple of years, and it's historical. And I don't think they planned on having cars at that time when they built it, so. Any questions for me?
Alderman Clifford?
Arthur, do you, you said you already talked to the police?
Yes, I went to the police chief. I went to, there was one policeman, I thought it was someone named Lightning or something last year.
And they, they referred you?
They referred me to here, and then to Bloomer, and they said, there's nothing we can do. And they said, be creative. I said, okay, so can I park in the park? You know, can I drive up on the sidewalk and park in the park? No, you can't do that. Well, that's creative. Can I park in the dead end? Oh, no, somebody has to turn around. The dump has to turn around. And I'm invaded when they come for art in the park, or art in the park.
I'm just kinda at a loss here, because the, doesn't the police chief have to be in charge of parking?
Well, they passed it on, and I think that, you know, so after, that was a year ago, and a year and a half ago. And before that, there wasn't an issue. My office was in there, but now we sold the house in Park Ave. And so I could park the cars down there, but it's a long walk for us now from Park Ave all the way up to the, and it's just me and my wife in the house now. I never thought I'd get rid of all my children, but they, you know, finally decided it only stopped once, once every other day, so. Anyway, so, but that's right. I followed all the protocol. I'm not, you know, saying, getting upset about it. It's just something that we're kinda having you think about and, and see what you can do. Any other questions?
Alderman Grusso?
Arthur, in the 20-something years, they've since closed it off the curb cut. You know, I used to be able to go around the park and back out.
Right.
Has that been better for you or worse for you, or is there any?
Well, it was better until all of a sudden GPS come along, and everybody comes zipping up the hill. And I laugh if I'm sitting out there in the summer, and I see them come zipping by. I know where they're going. They're trying to get out that side. And even, I think, a policeman, his name was Oliver, was there when the big tractor trailer came. And he had to, we had to clear every car on the street for him to back out to get onto Volkswagen. And so that's like three oversized vehicles, and I did, and he did say, well, I just follow my GPS. So I don't know how you get in touch with GPS, but I know it's not the Board of Alderman that's gonna do that.
Aside, Art, aside from that, as far as parking goes, was, was there a parking issue when that was open for you?
Geez, I don't know, because it was my studio most of the time, and I used to park somewhere else. And, and my wife was at the house, and I worked till the wee hours of the morning. But, but in general, no, I haven't had issues till last year. And, and the parking ban went in, I think in 2010, or 2011, that went in. We've owned it since 1993. And restored it all. Barbara Carris in the interim. I had to go down to South to work for Stowe to pay off a half million dollar debt. But anyway, I did it and come back, and now we're living down there, and it's just the two of us now, so.
All right. Well, I just was trying to figure if that being open would solve any kind of problem, because I don't know how it got.
I don't know. I think it's actually safer, okay, because they really do speed through there.
Right.
And I like to wave at them, or wave in a funny way, but I can't do that, so.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Neary?
Yeah, Attorney Bloomer did send along your story and your request back in October to get you on the traffic committee. But we didn't have an October meeting because of some COVID outbreaks. We do have one scheduled for Friday of this week, and you are on the agenda, so.
Does that mean you want me to come, or you're just on, I'm on the agenda?
Yeah, so I mean, you are more than welcome to come, and if you'd like to, it'd be super helpful. That meeting's Friday morning at 9:00.
If it would be helpful, I'm fine, yeah.
Okay. But yeah, that's likely where we'll start. I don't know if we'll be able to figure this whole problem out there, but we can certainly talk about it.
And Matt's been super nice and doing it. Actually, everyone in City Hall has been great. But I keep going in one door and coming out the other door, so. I thought it'd be better if I come down and speak outside, don't put him on the agenda. And you could probably, if I put this on, you'd never know what my accent was, so. I've been here 52 years and still. But I figure I'm a Vermont, and they say you have to live here, bond here? No, I think it's when you die here is where. So anyway, thank you very much for your consideration.
Alderman Gill?
Alderman Gill? Sorry? I don't think it's a problem to put a dead end sign here, because I think it's a wonderful idea, because a lot of people are going down there because of the, what's going on in their car, trying to get where they need to go. I don't think they caught up with us that it's a dead end street. So putting a dead end sign here should not be a problem with the traffic committee. I think that's where it's gotta go. My other issue is parking. Is there one right in front of your house on the right side of the road?
With the railing, but that means I'm on the road.
Oh, okay. So the parking ban, the one?
When I redesigned it and rebuilt it, you know, I didn't think parking was an issue, because I had never gotten a ticket in there. But now with the plow, and I, and you hear them coming, and we're trying to go, it's only up and downstairs. And we're both getting kind of, oh, it takes us a while to get down the damn stairs to get there, so.
So we need to solve that problem somehow?
If possible. I'm just, again, I'm requesting to. And here's pictures that Tom does.
So, Art, what we're gonna be doing over the next, I don't know, I guess probably year or so, and I don't think that anything's gonna start until this coming spring. But we've been working on a redesign for that part of the park right there. The bandstand has been, you know, rendered non-useful.
Non-operable, right.
Can't be used or anything. And have they started taking that down?
I know there's a sign there that, you know, green screen put up, yeah.
They're gonna be demolishing that soon. I don't know if they're gonna take it down piece by piece or just level it. But that's coming out, and the rec committee, along with Kim Peters and others that are associated with the rec department, are looking at a complete redesign of that block. And I'm wondering if maybe as part of our discussion as we move forward with this, we can talk about a winter, because it doesn't get used for, you know, the band in the park or anything in the winter.
And even the plow just comes in just for the people on the street, and they don't, yeah.
Well, I mean, there's gonna have to be like a couple of spaces for parking for people to, for the band members of the Historical Band to drop their equipment off and everything else. I'm wondering if maybe we can work something out with you where we can put a couple of spaces right by, across from your house in that area as part of the redesign, and you use it from whatever, December 1st to April 1st, or whatever it is.
Yeah, March, March 31st.
March 31st. And that would be for you to use, maybe two spaces, and then the rest of the year, those two spaces can be used for the members of the band for drop off, for dropping their equipment. Because frankly, we're even talking about maybe putting the bandstand down toward that corner away from the 4 and 7 corner. So it'd be right across from Brad's office.
Right, yeah.
So that might be something that we can work into that. So I'll let you know if the rec committee holds any meetings, and also the bigger committee that's working on the redesign for that part. And, you know, if there's something that we can do there, that might be an option that will benefit everybody. There'll be a couple of parking spots for the band, and then in the winter, a couple of spots for you.
Geez, that's like overboard. No, no, I know they have. They need help in the redesign. I can at least be on the advisor thing.
We'd love to bring you in for, for your expertise, for sure.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. We are still outside the rail, and up next I have Susan Schreiber.
Thanks. With me is Paul Gallo and Dave Kopick, and we were gonna talk about Rutland Creek Path and a grant opportunity. And I realize I haven't been before you in quite a while to give you kind of an update on where we are with Segment 3, which is in the right-of-way phase, and it's taking a lot longer than we anticipated. We had to do a title abstract report. I worked with Matt Bloomer for the suburban property. And right now, the appra, there's been an appraisal done of the suburban property, which will allow us to use the value of that land that the city will eventually own as part of the in-kind match for the project. But until the appraisal's done and approved by VTRENs, the property transfer can't occur. So Suburban is anxious to transfer the property, and we're anxious to get through right-of-way. But we're in this, one thing leads to another to another, and it just doesn't seem to get passed right-of-way. So we were hoping that we would be out to bid by this late fall, and now I'm hoping it's early next year. Once we finish the right-of-way phase, we do final engineering and put it out to bid. But meanwhile, this summer Rotary contacted us about, they'd like to support the path. And they asked what we thought we could use, and so we contacted the rec department and talked about a bench. They have since purchased one of the benches that the Chaffey Project was doing, and we'll site that bench along Rutland Creek Path Segment 3 when it's constructed. So that's kind of exciting. Once we get to construction, we anticipate it to take six to 12 months, depending. So we're really hoping that we can get it out to bid in the spring and start construction shortly thereafter. And I'm gonna let Paul talk about the, where we are financially with this.
Okay. Well, as you know, this, this segment is Segment 3. It stretches from the railroad trussel at West Street, goes down 300, 350 feet due west on West Street, and comes to the end of the suburban property, goes on to the Green Mountain Popper property, crosses over the fenced area, and shoots right across to Meadow Street Park. So there's a 130-foot, foot, foot bridge that crosses over East Creek. I can tell you that we have secured a sponsor, a longstanding sponsor for the naming rights of that bridge. We also have secured the naming rights of the park. So we've secured quite a bit of money for those two items, which is really good. Susan and I have been scrubbing the preliminary engineering document for each line item of costs and plucked a handful that we are working with to get some in-kind pledges in place, like we've done in the past. So we're, we're really in great shape. We're always looking for more pledge holders. I know we came in front of you many years ago, talking about the path early on, and someone just reached out to us and said, we would really like to help, and it was a substantial donation. So again, we're not out to the taxpayers for taxpayer money on this project. We never have. We're not affecting any property taxes of any city resident. It started in '06. We got our first segment in three or four years later, and here we are. So we're closing out. We're hoping to close out this fourth piece, so it's all connected. So you can go from Giorgetti Park to Meadow Street Park and on to River Street. So we're really excited to get this. We really want it to go to bid in the winter. And we know that it has a lot more value, more competitive. All those big pieces of equipment are idle, and the estimators generally, it works in our favor. So this is about a $1.25 million construction segment. We've secured the grants. Again, we're just talking about matching money, which, which runs about $200,000 to $230,000. So, and we're, we're well, well on our way there.
Good. Thank you.
So I'm gonna go back and tell you that there were, there's a clearing of, required of some vegetation and trees on Meadow Street Park, along the Riparian Buffer on the east side of East Creek, but west of the path, if you can picture that. And VTRENs, our preliminary plans showed a bunch of trees to be planted in that area after it's been cleared out. And VTRENs notified the engineer and said that the project won't cover the cost of the tree plantings, that they were nice, but they weren't necessary. So they, he contacted me and said, what do you want to do? And I said, let's pull it out of the project, and we'll find other, another source for new trees in there, and talk to the arborist, and that leads us to the 350.org, Dave Kopick from 350.org, and this grant opportunity that we wanted to tell you about.
Hi, Dave Kopick. My involvement here just kind of comes through this group, an environmental group I'm involved with, 350 Rutland County. And we have been working to help plant trees in Rutland City, working with Tim Smith, the arborist, and the Rutland High School Environmental Club, who's been very good in wanting to get their hands dirty and plant trees. These are trees along the sides of the streets. And the city arborist has wanted them to be like at least two-inch diameter to like 12-foot tall trees, because they're the ones that are gonna survive in that environment. And so we've, to date, we've only planted eight of those. We're gonna have another 16. We're gonna try to plant by the end of this week before the ground freezes. And the funding from that came from, it's called the Hills and Hollowes Grant from the Vermont Community Foundation. So we're, we were working on that, and then all of a sudden, we find out about this TD Bank grant opportunity. And we just thought it'd be a perfect thing to, you know, we've got the, you know, we have the people that wanna write the grants. We have the, the kids from the school that wanna plant the trees, and we have a, you know, the city arborist who's really on board with this, and they'll save the, the city some, you know, a fair amount of money too. So the, this TD Bank grant is, it's operated through by the Arbor Day Foundation. And the whole idea for this grant is just to, in their words, it's to support green infrastructure development, tree planting, forestry stewardship, and community green space expansion. And the idea is to move toward a low-carbon economy. And the municipalities are urged to apply in collaboration with community partners. And so that could be us, our group, and the Rutland High School Environmental Club. So that would help with the, you know, getting the grant. And only half the money can be used. I mean, we're, we'd be eligible for $20,000, but only half of that money could be for trees. And we're thinking the other half could go for like benches, bike racks, other, you know, maybe signage to go with the path, just to kind of, you know, fill things out, make the creek path nicer. This would be a typical grant, what they call a typical grant. It means that the city would be compensated in full. There's no match. So the city would spend the money upfront and then be compensated in full for that, whatever the amount of the grant ends up being. And so Susan has already sort of identified where the trees would be planted. I'm gonna let you just take a look from here.
Okay. So basically, we haven't, we've just started looking at the grant. It's due December 17th. So I don't have details of how much we should apply for. We're gonna work that out. Right now, I just wanted to ask that the board, ask the city or the mayor to apply for the grant, and I would come back the first meeting in December with the details of what we, the application actually will be, and give us a letter of participation. So we just wanted to tell you about it, get your feedback, see if we should proceed with applying for this grant, and then have you look at it when, before we submit it. But we really needed to let you know about this before we spend time trying to gather the pieces and write a grant application.
Alderman Gill?
I would like to move that, suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, the motion is suspendable. It's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I move to authorize the mayor to allow to file for the grant.
We have a motion spent seconded. Is there any?
To apply. The city would be the applicant.
All right. So Alderman Gillam's moving to authorize the mayor to sign the application for the grant. And the seconded is okay with that?
Yep.
Perfect. Any discussion, debate, questions on this? Alderman Franco?
Just a question. Is there a maximum that the grant goes to? Have they listed that?
It's $20,000, and I don't ent, I don't think we're gonna come up with that kind of budget. I'm thinking maybe $10,000, because as Dave said, only 50% can be used for tree planting. So I'm not sure if, I'm gonna reach out to the grant administrator to make sure the other things we mentioned are eligible expenses. I know signage is, but I don't know about benches or bike racks or the others. So we just figured we'd back into the number of trees based on what other, the other elements cost.
I think it's important to include some, the educational component of, you know, the species that are there, what is invasive, what isn't. So we'll be including that in signage, just to add that educational piece.
Very good. Alderman deploy.
So Dave, I was, I was gonna ask you, what are the species of trees? Because we, we just had to do away with a bunch of the ash because of the Emerald Ashwood. So what are you thinking about bringing in?
Well, Tim, Tim is the expert, the arborist, and he's really strong on red maple, silver maple crosses hybrids.
Yeah.
That's one, one tree, burr hooves, or another swamp hooves. And we're in a situation where you have wires growing overhead. There's a shad, which is a tree that doesn't grow wide and doesn't grow really tall, but it's a shady tree.
Now, these are along the, you call it the Riparian Buffer on that area, right? And that would all be in this, that's where all the trees would be going? In that section, on the path, or no?
Well, yeah. I mean, there'd be, there'd be one group of trees, about 10 trees, that would be just inside of Tunica and the creek. That's where we'd see the river.
So where that would be located is the North Lily Softball Field at Meadow Street Park. If you went down the right field, the right ball line, it would be right down on that corner.
Sure.
Right.
Along the river.
Okay. And I guess, so what I'm getting at here is this. We had a major flood there 10 years ago. And I know you were talking about at least some thicker trees being put in. And but even as they mature, I think you wanna keep in consideration that another flood could come through. Are they going to be able to withstand flooding in that area, which happens occasionally? Just make sure we're not wasting that money with a tree that if it gets flooded and is underwater for a few days, then it's gonna be a big problem for the, for the, for the species to be able to survive.
I think it's, I think it sits on top of that berm that was built in the early 70s. I think Nikki bit it. Paul, you remember that? It's on top of that berm.
Okay.
Some concrete back there.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other questions, discussion? If not, we have a motion spent seconded to authorize the mayor to sign in support of this grant application. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. We are still outside the rail, and up next we have Representative William Knott.
Thank you. So I just wanted to stop in and give a brief update. Today, the Rutland County delegation met with Dr. Levine and the Vermont State Health, Vermont State Health Department in regards to COVID numbers in Rutland County. Mayor Lea was also present. It was a presentation on the state, and really what the, what the state wanted in conjunction with Governor Scott, who is gonna highlight these things at a press conference tomorrow, is there's really four takeaways. Rutland County, right now, our numbers are exceedingly high. Rutland County is currently accounting for 18% to 20% of all COVID cases statewide, well above and beyond our percentage of the state's population. So the first takeaway that was passed on to us was to encourage folks to be vaccinated. I don't have the numbers for Rutland County in particular, but statewide, COVID patients in ICU beds, 70% are. in ICU beds, 70% are unvaccinated. So it was driven home a couple of times to us. This is really right now the spike and the challenges we're seeing with the Delta variant. It's, it's a spike of the unvaccinated. So vaccinations are encouraged for people who are still hesitant. The second point that was brought home is one of the hardest hit groups right now as far as percentage with the virus are children, 0 to 9 years of age. So there's still no vaccination for kids under five, but there's a vaccination now for, for the children up, you know, five to nine. Parents are encouraged to vaccinate their children. In almost all cases, children with COVID are not showing symptoms, they're not actually getting sick. But what they are doing is serving as reservoirs for the virus, where they can actually be shedding the virus and contagious for two, three weeks. And they believe there's a lot of COVID infections that are, that are jumping from, from children. So parents are encouraged to get their children vaccinated as well. The, the next issue is booster shots. There's been some question about who's eligible for a booster, who can get a booster. And the message coming from the State Health Department is, given the COVID spike in, in the state right now, living in Vermont makes you high risk. So as long as you are past the initial phase, which varies depending on which of the three vaccinations you've got, if you are past your initial phase where you are now eligible for a booster, the state is encouraging everyone to get a booster shot. And they are going to do some announcements coming up later this week of opening additional clinics to get vaccinations or boosters, as well as opening additional testing facilities. And the third, or excuse me, the fourth takeaway was masking. While the governor has no inclination to do a mask mandate, he is going to, we were told, really redouble his efforts on encouraging masking. And what we were told was, if you were, if someone is, say, let's stop at a convenience store, pop in and grab a, grab a soda, that's very low risk in and out. But what the state is concerned about is holiday gatherings, is gatherings indoors, in, en masse. They certainly saw some spikes that they can trace back to Halloween gatherings. And with Thanksgiving coming up and then the Christmas season, Hanukkah, so on and so forth, the worry is that people will get together and feel comfortable because they're vaccinated, but 30% of people in ICU beds right now are people who were vaccinated and have breakthrough infections. So it's a concern. So what the state is encouraging is people who gather indoors, en masse, for, for any length of time, that masks be worn at those gatherings. One additional thing that was announced today, the governor sent a letter to the President Pro Tem of the Vermont Senate and the Speaker of the Vermont House. And while the governor has no inclination to do a statewide mask mandate, he has proposed a special one day session of the legislature to meet on November 22nd, with the goal being in one day to pass a law that would allow individual municipalities to pass a mask mandate if they so chose. Municipalities, if this were to go through on the 22nd, would be eligible to do so beginning on November 29th. They would need to renew it once every 30 days and they would not be able to renew it after April. So if the, if the Speaker of the House and the President Pro Tem take the governor up on this offer and the legislature does meet, that is something that municipalities will be able to consider imposing their own mask mandate if they so choose. So though I just wanted to stop by for informational purposes, given the, given the high COVID numbers in the county, given that the state is doing a real push both in Rutland County and statewide to get information out about booster shots and vaccinations, I certainly just felt it was worth stopping in and sharing this. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Knott. Any questions before we let them go? Hearing and seeing none. We are still outside the rail. Is there anyone else remaining who wishes to address the board on items on the agenda? Seeing none, we are on to communications from the mayor, Mayor Lehrer.
I've been actually all set tonight.
All right. This brings us to additions and deletions to the agenda. We have two, I believe, a Community Economic Development Committee report, which we will add on our reports of standing committees. And Attorney Blumer, I believe you have one?
Yes, an executive session related to negotiation of a contract.
All right.
So?
All right, we have, we have a motion has been seconded to add these items to the agenda. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. This brings us to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Up first, Barbara Spalding, RRA, VT Transportation Alternatives Resolution, pages one and two of your packet. Barbara could not make it tonight, but I believe Alderman Neary is going to speak to us?
Yeah, this is standard municipal resolution for, required by VTран's for the transportation alternatives application. It is just a commitment to the match if we were to be awarded. Right now, we are pursuing a $300,000 grant with a $75,000 match. I was able to speak to the program manager who said that if we were interested in doing some in-kind match, we could, as long as the total grant value did not exceed 300,000. So if we did want to try to use some paving or other modes of in-kind, that is an op, option. But as of now, if we go through, the whole cash value would be 75,000. And just to reiterate, in, in the committee meeting, we discussed that that is, this is a reimbursement grant, so we'd be going through the whole process, then being reimbursed. And yeah, if there are any questions, happy to answer those.
Any questions regarding this?
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
A motion to suspend the rules, suspended, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move to circulate the Vermont Transportation Alternative Resolution for signature.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Any further discussion, questions, debate? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Clerk Heck will start the resolution around. And we will move on to Commissioner Rotundo, Municipal Roads Grant in Aid Program, pages three through six of your packet.
All right, thank you. So tonight, I'm requesting the board to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent to participate in the SFY 22 Municipal Roads Grant in Aid Program. And the letter is actually in your packet. And what we, what we are going to be applying for is a hay bale shredder to distribute hay mulch on disturbed soil areas. The state maximum award amount is $6,430. And the city's match would be $1,608. And if we are awarded the, the grant, our match would come out of the DPW Streets machinery and equipment line.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, suspended, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And motion to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of intent to participate in the SFY 22 Municipal Roads Grant, Grants in Aid Program, equipment purchase.
Second. We have a motion suspended, seconded. Any questions, discussion, debate? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Commissioner Rotundo, you are still up. Request for referral.
Yep, I'm requesting the board to refer the draft, the Long Term Control Plan, to the DPW Committee. This would be the second public meeting and the last public meeting on the Long Term Control Plan. It's currently 90% complete and we'd like to schedule this meeting to give the board and the interested public an update as to where we stand and also to allow an opportunity for everyone to ask questions and make comments. And we felt that the DPW Committee would be the, the right place for that, because I would, I would expect that this meeting would be longer than the normal public hearing, that we would typically schedule before a Board of Alderman meeting.
I'll move to refer to the Public Works Committee.
Second.
We have a motion to refer and it has been seconded. Alderman Clifford?
How long you anticipate?
Well, I think the, you know, Weston and Sampson is our consultant and I would expect that they're going to give a presentation of about a half an hour. And then, and it's basically, it's a 300, I think it's a 370-page report that we just received. So we'll let them give a, a thorough update on the actual report. And I think it's really important for board members to attend this because based on that meeting, we're going to be picking out the projects that we're going to be committing to, to the state as to, you know, which, which projects will be part of our long-term and short-term control plan. And, you know, some are quite expensive, some are cheaper. But I think everyone really needs to see that and make sure that you're comfortable with what we intend on submitting.
What's your timeframe? What's your timeframe when you need this done by?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that, you know, we just received the, the report on Friday, we need to review it first. And, and Weston and Sampson needs to put their PowerPoint presentation together. So I'm thinking that it would be maybe the first or second week of December.
Okay.
Budget time.
Well, I guess I, I won't be here the first week. I won't be here from the 2nd to the 13th, but that doesn't mean that my vice chair couldn't do something like that. So let me get with him and I'll, I'll get back to you on a, on a time.
Yeah, I mean, we can, you know, we can for sure do the second week whenever you're, whenever you're here.
Well, the second week is when I wanted to schedule the, the committee. I was going to do that, ask that tonight, just for the budget.
Okay.
So I didn't want to kind of have that before a meeting and, you know, kind of keep us here all night, so.
Right.
Let me get with my vice chair, see what he wants to do.
Okay, great.
We have Alderman Neary?
Yeah, just a quick question for you, Jim. Barring any significant or substantial public or city comments, what, what do you envision the timeframe being on the final draft?
Well, you know, we, we got a, or Weston and Sampson got an extension for the report through the end of November. So they're going to exceed that, obviously. But I think once we, you know, once we receive the comments, then I think it's just assembling the actual projects. I mean, all the work is done, so I can't imagine it being, you know, finished any later than the end of December. And I'm sure the state's going to be fine with that.
Yeah, I was just wondering timeline wise if, you know, there were any state or federal funding sources like the one we had mentioned before, that we could sort of time it to meet?
You know, we, we, originally, we thought that this was going to be done in May of this year. And, and then the engineers needed additional time to collect data and use the, the H&amp;H model. So we negotiated with the state and we were given an extension through the end of October. And I made it clear that we wanted this done because we don't want to miss out on any funding opportunities. But we've been talking to the state and, you know, I, I think we're still in line. I think, I think we're still in good position for funding. And, you know, they've also been telling me that there's going to be CSO funding for the next three years.
Excellent.
So again, you know, the idea is get this done, get it completed by, say, the end of December, and then immediately go in for, for funding. And it's my understanding that there's funding out there right now that's 100% forgivable. You know, some for design, some for construction. And we're hopeful that that percent stays the same for, for, you know, 2022 and 2023. And I, I kind of think that it will. I think, you know, the state recognizes how much this is going to cost some of these communities like ours. And I think this is a good, you know, they've got some money now coming into the coffers, they've got a good vehicle to, to help us solve this problem.
Excellent. Yeah, who knows how much that $1 trillion infrastructure bill will be dedicated to this specifically, so. Great, thank you.
Welcome.
All right, so we have a motion suspended, to refer this issue to DPW Committee. Hearing no further discussion, debate, or questions, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Up next, Treasurer Markowski, Treasurer's Report. This was emailed each of us.
Everybody, four months into the fiscal year, so I just want to quickly go over some of the numbers. Cash balances are, as expected, at the time that we're in right now, right before collection and right after the water collection. So cash balances are high. When you look at the cash balances, keep in mind that there's, we have that 2.2 million that came in from ARPA, so that's keeping our cash balance high right now. Delinquencies, you can see from the reports, I mean, we make progress, but if, these delin, delinquent accounts are always accruing interest as well. So we do some collections, we add some interest, really working on more of a process payment agreements for some folks. But still, tax sale is an option. You can't just let property balances grow. So we actually have two tax sales scheduled tomorrow that we'll have here at 10 o'clock. Waters, sewer delinquencies have become a real problem. When you look at the numbers, some balances are pretty high in individual accounts and we can actually tax sale a property for water and sewer delinquencies. And we've targeted a couple of the larger ones throughout the year and a couple headed into January I think we'll target. We did receive 81,000 through the Vermont Emergency Assistance Program to assist. I, I meant to pull up to see how many homeowners took advantage of that, but it was quite a few actually, so. Pooled cash, when you look at pooled cash, you see that our water fund is the only one of the proprietary funds right now that has a positive cash balance. So really something that should be of concern right now. Parking fund, that's just going to get worse. Transit fund, I'll reach out to Laz to see when I pulled out the budget, you can see there, the revenues aren't even close to what the forecast was. See what's happening there. Right now, 12% of budgeted revenue, so I'll find out a little more about that. Overall, when you're looking at revenues and expenses in the general fund, pretty much everything's in line four months in. So, but we'll keep watching, we have some big expenditures coming up in November, so you'll see those with the, the appeal of the assessment on the college property, is it significant cost that you'll see in November, post in November? The water and sewer funds, revenue's about 25%, right, really in target. Expenses pretty much in target as well. And I will note the RRA has a balance, cash balance of 98,000 and still holding about 75,000 for special projects and stuff in the RRA, so.
Alderman Davis?
So Treasurer Markowski, with parking meter, I mean, I, I don't know how a big couple for parking funds because the kiosks are, the kiosks, they are where they are, people don't use them a lot of times. Enforcement is good from what we hear as far as ticket writing. But truly, I think the salaries have to come out of that budget. The budget cannot sustain the salary for the downtown police officer, nor can it sustain the salary of the retirees. It's not there. So, I mean, I don't know that that's a board decision, but they need to get transferred possibly back to the police department budget. I don't know, but they're not going to, it's, they're, you're never going to see that fund sustain itself with three salaries coming in.
No.
Because we don't, we don't generate enough revenue.
No, we don't.
Unless you go back to the old leaders where you fed it with a quarter, at least you got a quarter.
Yeah.
Other than that, I don't know what you're going to do.
Can I add to that, Mary, real quick? Because it's in the same vein. It's not just the salaries, right? It's also the health insurance costs as well.
Right, the benefits.
And the benefits. And here's the thing, part of the reason that those are so high, from my understanding from our discussion, I believe, is because we're taking police officers that have earned their tenure over a period of time, they've come to the, the, this position, and that's transferred out of the PD and into parking. So it's not like that typically wouldn't have been paid from the PD if they retired out of PD. So to push it back to the PD budget wouldn't be in- So to push it back to the P D budget wouldn't be inappropriate, right? We could even say that the percentage of time and the percentage that they've been working on the, the parking maybe comes out, but it, to, to keep those components in the P D budget would probably be the most appropriate move.
Yeah, something to think about in the budgeting, we'll be looking at the police budget and the parking budget. I don't know if that would be the time to, I know that the chief, when he did his budget, certainly wasn't planning on adding additional expenses, but you're absolutely right. The way that it's designed right now, it's never going to get better, and we're just going to get deeper in a hole as we get through this year.
Hold on, Mary DePoy.
So Mary and Matt, this is a question for, for both of you. I've heard, as, as Sharon has heard, that the ticket writing is up, it's been boosted, and some people I've talked to say significantly. So number one, are you seeing that in the revenues being generated in there? And number two, are people coming to you saying, because you're the, what is it, Traffic Bureau or something?
Traffic judge.
Traffic judge.
Traffic judge for the parking. His honor.
What is going on in your view of things? So I'll ask Mary first on the revenue portion, and then you as far as are people like saying, hey, I got to get out of this ticket, and they're trying, so.
I think we're seeing definitely an increase in the number of tickets written. The problem in the fund is you can write a lot of tickets and they can stand out there as receivable. If you're not collecting the cash, you're not supporting the, the fund in that way. But definitely an increase in the tickets written and the tickets outstanding.
Who authorizes the boot, if a boot is put on? Because I know we have a couple of them.
Well, I don't, I haven't been involved in any since I've been here in the five years, so I don't know if it's the police department or, I'm not sure. I haven't been at, I don't think as a traffic judge I would be doing that, but even as the city attorney, I haven't, no one's asked me anything about booting, so I don't know what the current policy is.
Okay. I remember when I first got here, we had the same situation where there are people out there with $500 parking balances or more than that.
More than.
They were booted immediately and they went right down and paid, like that day, because they had to get their car back.
We still have an ordinance.
So, I mean, that may be.
And we have had.
A way to get people to get clean on their balances.
And I bet in the last two months, we've had some of those, so. Really, the parking enforcement works on that.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I guess Officer Rosario would probably be the one to boot them.
Yeah, and he does. I mean, it's not, it's not an easy one, but he has in the last couple of months, there have been a few that he's targeted, yeah, yeah.
Now, just to get to your point about, and, and Alderman Davis, I don't think that the people vote on the parking meter fund or do that. Is that, is that a voted on and in March, the general fund budget?
You will okay the budget. It's a separate.
It's on water and sewer, but that's a separate fund that's not. But parking meter is in the general fund.
He is voting.
In the general fund budget.
Okay.
Well, it isn't part of, the parking meter fund is separate the operational budget, so it doesn't go through the process of voter approval.
Right. That's what I'm getting at.
Like the general fund.
So Alderman Dunn, just, I just want to make sure that if we're going to go and put that, the salary, those salary items back into general fund under public safety, now it's being voted on by the general public as, whereas the public's, or the, the parking meter is not voted on. I, I don't believe it's part of the general fund that's voted on in March. So that's just something to be cognizant of, if we're going to go and move it from parking meters back into public safety.
Yeah, I'm not.
It's going to jack up public safety, it's going to make public, public safety look like it's a lot higher, and, you know, we and the voters are going to have questions, why has public safety so much, or, or the police department gone up so much? So, and you're talking a couple hundred thousand dollars there.
So I would just add that it's a fundamental problem, no matter where you put it, values of the parking meter fund, police department fund, it's the, it's the old, it's, it's the underlying problem, you don't have enough revenue.
It's, it's the revenue, and I'm hoping that those revenue, if the, I'm hoping that the revenue goes up with the increased enforcement that we're hearing is happening. How much is to be seen?
It's quite a large gap.
Well, I mean, we had the retirement and the new officer has just started in the last, what, four, five months, six months?
Six months, maybe, yeah.
So let's see where that is six months from now with a full year under his belt as to what the parking meter fund looks like at that point.
And I would just add that I think that this is a perfect conversation to have when you're having your debate of all the public safety budget.
Right.
When you have all the players in the room.
So, so my concern, just to add on top of that, because I'd see your point, the current officer, we want to cover the fund. The fund is being drained, so, so it's a rob Peter to pay Paul type of problem, right? The fund is being drained, not necessarily even by the active officer that's taking care of it. Maybe that remains, that would be appropriate in my, like, you know, from a business standpoint, be appropriate to even maybe leave the active officer in there. It's the retiree funds and the retiree insurance that those people worked in the P D for a period of time. And, and, yeah, not to belabor the point, this might be for discussion, just to say there, there may be a balance that we can find, but taking the, parking is supposed to be the number two revenue recuperation operation for a city, right? Number one is taxes, number two is parking. That's not happening for us, and, and that might be because of the appropriateness of where those funds are being drawn from for those retirees' salaries.
Yeah, and I, I really agree with you on that because they never had anything to do with the parking meter fund, now they retire, and now all of a sudden they're lumped into that. So maybe it should be appropriately back into public safety. I got you. Yeah.
Any other questions for Treasurer Markowski?
Just a very small, 63 First Street here, is that?
Uh, right next to M S J.
Is that the burnt out home?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we will likely own that.
Good, that's, good news, there's some movement on that.
Yeah.
We're going to be proud of the goal of that.
Oh, Lord, that's not a good idea.
It'd be a summer home.
A summer home.
No windows.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. This brings us to reports of standing committees. Committee on Economic Development, Alderman Talbot.
All right. So the Community and Economic Development Committee met on November 4th, 2021. Members present included myself, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Dunn, Alderman Gillum, and Alderman Neary. Others present, Alderman Whitcomb, Alderman Clifford, Matt Blumer, Andrew Stranistee, Brennan Duffy, Mary Markowski, and Nathaniel Gibson of Collaboration 133. The committee met in the conference room of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission in order to utilize their video conferencing system. The meeting was called to order at 5:32 PM. The purpose of the meeting was to learn about the work completed up to this point on a new city website. Matt Blumer began by outlining the history of this project, which began when he was recruited by the former mayor to help create a scope of work for a new website. An R F P was issued, and Collaboration 133 was one of the respondents, but the project stalled. Around 2016, the Board of Aldermen's Marketing Committee revisited the R F P responses, and Collaboration 133 was hired to create a new city website. Since that time, roughly 80% or more of the work has been completed, but the project has been in a holding pattern for the last two years. Blumer recommended taking the necessary steps to launch the site in its current form and then address desired changes to the new site. Nathaniel Gibson of Collaboration 133 gave a rundown of the project budget, including remaining unimvised amounts and all deliverables that have been added to the project scope per request. Gibson suggested that a moratorium be placed on updates to the current city website during the content migration process. He estimates about four to six weeks are needed to execute the remaining updates necessary to launch the site, and he is available to move forward with this final phase in early 2022. Andrew Stranistee shared a comprehensive overview of updates made to the existing city website since the draft new website was put together in 2019. These updates would need to be made to the new city website, and Blumer suggested that each department head review this list to determine that all critical items are on the new site before launch. Stranistee also suggested having a tab that has all boards, committees, and commissions in one place with the minutes under the tab for each body. Alderwoman Davis asked if we track which areas of the current site are visited most often. Gibson explained that the URLs for the current city website pages do not make it easy to track usage. Alderman Talbot asked who will maintain the new website and how much flexibility the city will have to maintain the website in-house. Blumer explained that the plan is to have a handful of city employees trained by Collaboration 133. He also suggested that style standards be established to maintain consistency across the site. Mary Markowski suggested that each department have one person who is able to make updates to that department's pages. Brennan Duffy gave a brief history of the development of the Rutland Municipal Business Portal, which is still live but largely unused. He asked if there is interest in re-implementing the portal as part of this process. Davis asked if it is cost prohibitive to have someone external maintain the new city website. Blumer explained that the new site will be relatively easy for city employees to update after minimal training. Back-end maintenance will be built into an ongoing maintenance contract, including hosting fees and domain name registration with Collaboration 133 or another vendor. Gibson said he maintains several municipal websites around Vermont and that the maintenance costs are usually around $1,000 a year. He explained that the challenging aspect of maintaining the business portal involves complicated payment integration work. The informational pieces of the business portable, portal could be rolled into the new city website at a relatively low cost. Talbot advocated for retaining the work that has gone into the business portal by migrating the content into the new city website. Gibson estimated that the cost to migrate the informational content only would be between 700 and $1,000. Mary Markowski stated that the treasurer's office still uses the rooms, meals, and entertainment tax return portion of the business portal and would like to retain that functionality. Gibson explained that there would be higher maintenance fees involved in maintaining this functionality as issues around payment security can be more complicated. Alderman Dunn just suggested that separating payment forms from the new city website would keep security maintenance costs much lower. Talbot indicated he would coordinate with Gibson and the department heads present to determine a budget for completing the new website. A motion was made to refer the new city website to the Finance Committee with a dollar amount to be determined. Motion passed unanimously, and I so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded to refer the new city website to the Finance Committee. Any discussion, questions, debate? Hearing and seeing, no, if all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The meeting adjourned at 6:41 PM.
Thank you very much, Alderman Talbot. Are there any questions for Alderman Talbot before we move on?
Oh, I have, like to make a comment. I really liked that technology was there. Hopefully we can have that in this room, too. Just a little comment.
All right. Well, that, that concludes reports of standing committees. There are no reports of select committees.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Gruza.
May mention, tonight we scheduled December 1st at 5:30 for General Committee Budget.
All right, December 1st, 5:30, General Committee Budget Meeting.
And the clerk recommends we use this room due to the amount of.
Perfect. All right, to be held in the, the main chambers. Very good.
Pass that for information, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Gruza. Reports of representatives, we have none. Petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication, there's nothing. Board of Control Commissioners, we have nothing. Unfinished business, is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Alderman Gillum.
It's not really unfinished business, but just an announcement. Well, it's finished now. Anyway, stuff a bus happened last weekend, we broke another record, $44,600, or $638.38. That's $3,000 over last year. I am really impressed with this community. When things are really down and out, they really come out and support the people who really need it. So it was a good event, so thank you very much to the Rutland community.
Excellent. Thank you, Alderman Gillum, that is great work, Brett Owens. Any other unfinished business to come before the board? That brings us to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman Clifford.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I wanted to schedule the D P W Budget Committee meeting for the 14th and the 15th. If we don't need to go to the 15th, then we won't, but I, it's usually historically to have two, two separate days for this because of the size of the budget and the water and sewer funds, sewer fees as well. 5:30, I'd like to use this room as well.
Very good.
Both nights, thank you.
So D P W will be meeting for their budget discussion the 14th and 15th if needed, 5:30 PM in the main chambers. Very good. Any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? Alderman Neary.
Yeah, a couple Aldermen and I received a message from Laz Parking Garage about a number of issues there, and seems like it's pretty complicated. Some of the things we've dealt with, some are to do with shopping carts, other are new issues. And it seems, it's such a complex structure, and there's been these sort of pervasive issues, and then there's some issues with the sort of parking meters downtown. I'm wondering if we should try to coordinate some sort of ad hoc committee specifically focused on parking, because it's, it's one of those things that seems to get kind of bounced around different committees, and it's not going away, it seems to be getting worse. I don't know if there's any appetite to do that amongst the board, but I feel like we at least owe it to Laz to sort of start that conversation.
Alderman Davis.
So historically, we, we've done that, and I think it's a decent idea to look at it again. We've done it in cooperation, collaboration with a partnership, because the partnership has ownership, so to speak, of, I was going to say the meters that no longer exist, but they also looked at what was long-term and short-term parking because they would meet with their, the businesses that located downtown, what worked for them, especially on the second, third floors of the buildings, if there were folks that were meeting, say, with a therapist or something that took a little bit longer than just running in and running out of a store. So I just would encourage that that's, that piece is also involved in the police department who have the control over, and with Laz, because that affects, whatever we do outside affects them inside as well.
Alderman DePoy.
I was going to say I support the idea because I'm not at the point of moving everything or even a portion of it at this point back into the police budget. I would like to see what can do along the lines, what we can do along the lines of encouraging people to pay their meter fees, how to use the kiosk better. I think the kiosks are going to be here for a while, if not for, you know, here to stay. We don't have the meters anymore, they were such a nightmare, I know, for a lot of the, a lot of the time, and that's why we get away with them, but, you know, and, and enforcement, we're going to have the enforcement there as well when we talk about it. So I think having all the players in place and having a committee that's specially designed for that might, we might be able to keep all, or at least most of those expenses out of the parking meter fund, in the parking meter fund, and not having to move them to taxpayer-funded liabilities, so that's, that's my thought, and so, you know, I think it's a good idea.
Thank you, Alderman DePoy. Any other comments, Alderman Gruza?
Oh, the, in the, I guess the eighties, I know I'm getting horseshit tonight, in the eighties, you know, I was working in the Opera House, and there were several businesses, two, three, four floors up. I was involved with Marble Valley Transit, I think I was chairman of the board when we built the Transit Center, because we were looking at the state office building coming in and more employees downtown. You know, we were trying to capture all the parking spots we possibly could with the plaza being redone back 20-plus years ago. But the complaint I'm hearing about now is, is, you know, there's no parking problems, you know, finding a place to park. Used to drive around the block four or five times hoping to find a place. The complaint I'm hearing is, is people overextend and they get this whopping parking ticket and then don't want to come back downtown again. And I feel that's hurting the downtown, and so don't a lot of others. And, and I know, I, I learned tonight that I, I guess we really rely on that money from the parking meter fund, but, you know, parking's been a problem in Rutland since I can remember, right? In the 50s and 60s, they were complaining and trying to figure it out, and we still have it, but we, we don't have a demand downtown. We don't have that demand to be ticketing like we are, I don't think. And I, you know, like I said, I, when I was downtown, you'd have to get in the, the old parking deck by 7:00 in the morning or it was full. And this was before the Transit Center, so, you know, we got a, we got a chicken or egg thing going on here, too. We got to get some people downtown to fight over these parking spots before we can tweak that problem, in my opinion, anyway. And, and I don't know, and I, a committee of some sort, I think Alderman DePoy is right, that needs to maybe just, you know, get in a little drone and take a little picture of it and say, you know, we got to fix this. And, and again, it's a very complex problem, because we need businesses down here to bring the traffic down, but we need to, you know, we need the money from, from that traffic, from those parking meter people, but we also need businesses, you know, so it's a chicken or egg. And then whammern them with a, with a hefty fee right now and not having that many businesses and not having that much demand seems to me like it's been a, you know, a big downfall for Rutland. So I support a committee, I don't know who it would be on it or how, how it would work, but it's a great idea. I don't know who would be on it or how, how it would work, but it's a great idea because somehow, there's a, there's a lot of moving parts in this that got to be, they got to be put together. And, and that's my opinion from having the 15, 18 years or whatever that I was at the radio station, parking in the parking deck, working downtown, and going to those second and third story businesses that aren't there anymore either. So that's my opinion, and just throw that out, it's a great idea.
Thank you, Alderman Garusa. Attorney Blumer, you had your.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it would be, it would be good timing as well because the lease with the state for the parking garage is up July 1 of next year, and we have to provide them with notice on January 1 as to really just whether we want to renegotiate or extend the current, the current contract. So I think that sounds like it would be right in the wheelhouse of this type of committee. And I know that from my time on the board, that at one point, the John Santinello, who's kind of the regional manager, was talking about how, you know, maybe to Sam's point, it's all kind of interrelated. He was saying that what they're charging in the, in the garage is kind of sometimes they're being undercut by the fact that he doesn't, he didn't think at the time that the city was charging enough at the meters. So if we charged a little bit more at the meters, it might push more people to the parking garage that are long-term parkers. So I think all of those, I mean, and I think he asked a couple times that that be, you know, considered. So I think, again, that sounds like what you're envisioning, and I think it would be helpful to, I don't know if Mary's still here, but again, the, the conversation about where they're, what the issues are with their revenue, again, that could be something that, you know, kind of goes into this committee as well, because I think it, there's a lot, there will be a lot going on in the next six or seven months that has to, have to do with at least the parking garage, so.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? If not, I will reach out and research who would make the best fit for this ad hoc committee.
Do we need a motion on that, or that's all on you?
Attorney Blumer, do we need a motion to form an ad hoc committee?
That's a, that's a good trivia, trivia question.
An ad hoc committee.
It's a good trivia question. I think you can create.
You can do it.
I think you can create the committee.
Chair does that.
Perfect.
You the boss.
Well, I will, I will send out an email looking for volunteers tomorrow. I'm trying to read the room, and I don't know how many people are going to jump at this, other than you, Alderman Neary. Do I have three people right here?
We'd like to schedule a charter ordinance committee meeting. The attorney, I believe, is ready to bring in some legislation for us to review. I'd like to do that on the 29th.
Oh, don't do that, I need finance budget.
29th of, this month.
I want to do the finance budget.
On the 29th?
Yes. Charter ordinance committee.
Well, no, we have a, we have a time certain here, don't we? For, before the election.
For the cannabis ballot question?
For the cannabis.
It'd be good to have the discussion with enough buffer to put it on the ballot if that's.
We can do it the 22nd, anybody? Yeah? November?
Yeah.
Before we get in the budget process?
For me.
Okay, 27, or 22nd, November 22nd.
You got all these, Henry?
I'd appreciate it if everyone would make their, their meetings through the telephone where I can do it properly. I don't know if there's other things that are scheduled, there's people that need to be warned.
I'll send you an email tomorrow.
I appreciate respectfully you all wanting to get meetings out there, but my brain doesn't work like yours, and I'm going to forget something here and a.
Oh, no, 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 I was going to send you an email anyway.
I'm going to not look so good here tomorrow morning sometime.
All right. So the clerk does request that you please reach out via telephone or via email to schedule, but these dates appear to be open right now.
Yes.
Is there any other miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board?
That's fine.
If not, Attorney Blumer, I believe you have a short executive session, you said?
I do.
Short?
Um, yeah, hopefully the motions will be longer than the actual executive session. Motion to find that premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a contract would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on the contract provisions to be negotiated. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, Attorney Blumer?
Motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, treasurer, clerk, and city attorney to discuss the negotiation of a contract as allowed under Title 1, Section 313a1a. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Would all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll stand down, clear the room, and enter into executive session.